All right, good morning, everyone. We're convening a joint hearing of the committees on Energy and Environmental Protection and Committee on Water and Land. It is Thursday, March 14th at 8:30 a.m. in Conference Room 325. And we will jump right in. First on the agenda, we have Senate Bill 2513 relating to wastewater systems. This establishes a pilot program and Hawaii Sea Grant to test new wastewater technology. And first up to testify is Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Aloha Chair Loewen, Vice Chair Cochran, Chair Ichiyama, Vice Chair Poi Poi, Charles Taylor, Charlie Taylor, on behalf of Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquatic Resources. We stand in support and stand on our written testimony and will be available for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have Department of Health.
Morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. John Nagato, Department of Health. The Department stands on its written testimony acknowledging the intent of this measure and provides comments. Be available for questions. Thank you.
Department of Hawaiian Homeland?
Aloha Chairs, Vice Chairs, Oriana Leal of DHHL. The Department stands on its written testimony in support of this measure and I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. And then we have VI, Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations on Zoom. Stuart Coleman?
Yes. Sorry. Good morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Committee Members. I'm having a little technical issues. My name is Stuart Coleman, and I'm the Executive Director of VI, Wastewater Alternative and Innovations. And we will stand on our written testimony in strong support of this bill and can offer some amendments as well if we should do it now or later, depending on what you think.
Great, thank you. And then Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition?
Thank you Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees. Ted Boland on behalf of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. I think this is a very important bill for the cesspool and upgrade effort. We have a system now where we have mostly septic systems. They don't do enough in taking out nitrates and they're quite expensive. This bill would do some research with the University of Hawaii to look into alternative technologies and demonstrate that they work here in Hawaii. So I think it's very important in terms of saving costs in the long term. We're going to spend probably a couple billion dollars on this effort over the next 30 years, and we need to do it as well and as affordably as possible for the homeowners and the government agencies. I would propose, so let me just say that cost savings is what this is all about. If we spend some money upfront now to do the research, we'll save a lot of money in the long run. So that's why this bill is important. I would propose a few minor amendments, and I have submitted them in my written testimony. Essentially, they add up to, we should designate not just Sea Grant, but also the Water Resources Research Center of the University of Hawaii, and they work in collaboration together rather than one or the other. And we should designate also in the, on page six, line 20 through page seven, line four, there is established a three-year new wastewater system and individual, I would add the words, and individual wastewater system technology demonstration and implementation pilot program to make clear that this is also about individual wastewater systems. The term wastewater systems in the rules of the Department refers to larger systems. So it's important to add the individual wastewater to make that clear. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. And then we have Sybil Lopez from Moloka'i Mokupuni on Zoom.
Not present.
Then we have additional written testimony from the Corps of Reef Alliance and six individuals in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions? All right, if not, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda. Senate Bill 2518 relating to geothermal energy exploration. This appropriates funds to HTDC for geothermal energy exploration. First up to testify, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Chairs, Loewen, Ichiyama, Vice Chairs, Cochran, Poi Poi, Members of the Committees, Mark Glick, Chief Energy Officer, Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our comments on Senate Bill 2518, Senate Draft Two, and happy to answer whatever questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Ulupono Initiative.
Good morning Chair Loewen, Chair Ichiyama, Members of the Committees. Michael Munikata here on behalf of Ulupono Initiative. We'd like to stand on our testimony in support of this measure. I just really do appreciate you folks hearing this bill. This is the last of the geothermal exploration bills that are out there. So keeping this measure alive for discussion and moving it through to the end would be great. Thank you again for your support of this.
Thank you. And then HTDC?
Hi, good morning Chair, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee, Wayne Noa, HTDC. And we stand on our written testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And Blue Planet Foundation?
Morning Chair Loewen, Chair Ichiyama, Members of the Committee, Jodi Robinson of Blue Planet Foundation. We'll stand on our testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have one individual on Zoom, Kiony Shizuma, not present. And then we have additional written testimony from Hawaii Chamber of Commerce in support, Hawaiian Electric in support, Innovations Development Group in support, Indigenous Consultants in support, and two individuals in opposition, four individuals in support, and one with comments. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions? If not, we'll move on. Next bill on the agenda, Senate Bill 2322 relating to water quality. This is the brown water testing bill we've had for several years now. And first up to testify is Department of Health.
Good morning Chairs, Vice Chairs and Committee Members. Darryl Lum, Department of Health Clean Water Branch Program Manager. The Department of Health stands on our written testimony with comments and offered amendments, and I will be available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Surf Rider Foundation on Zoom?
Not present.
Not present. And then Stuart Coleman, VI on Zoom again.
Good morning Chairs, Vice Chairs and Committee Members. Stuart Coleman from VI. We will stand on our written testimony in strong support of this bill. But just to add a few comments, Hawaii is one of the only states that suspends water quality testing that's regularly scheduled during brown water advisories. And these are kind of blanket conditions when there's a lot of rain and stormwater runoff when the conditions are the worst. And the assumption is that people know, visitors and locals alike, how bad the water quality is. But we actually don't know that. We know that a lot of people are really taking their health in their own hands when they go out there and they don't have the proper information. And so it also leads to really insufficient data about our water quality, how bad it is, because there's cesspool runoff, there's all kinds of runoff from the streets, oil, you know, petrocarbons, heavy, you know, toxic chemicals. And so this bill is really essential to make sure that we continue testing during these brown water advisories as scheduled and get that water quality data so we can fill in the gaps that we've been missing for years and years. Because my fear is that inevitably it's going to lead to a lawsuit against the state or someone who gets really sick when they're swimming in these terrible conditions. I'm available for comments afterwards. Mahalo.
Thank you. Then we have additional testimony from another chapter of Surf Rider Foundation in support, Surf Rider Foundation Oahu Chapter in support, and five individuals in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, questions? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Senate Bill 3285 relating to public utilities. So this would require the Public Utilities Commission prior to approving the sale of a public utility to a private entity to ensure that competitive bids had been solicited from non-investor-owned utilities. And first up to testify on this, we have the Consumer Advocate.
Aloha, good morning Chairs, Vice Chairs. My name is Michelangelo, and Members of the Committee, sorry. My name is Michelangelo. I'm the Executive Director of CA, part of the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Public Utilities Commission.
Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees, Leo Sunshin, Chair of the PUC. We'll stand on our written comments, written testimony, providing comments. I do want to point out though, as currently drafted, the term "public utilities" means all of the 2,000 regulated entities that we now regulate, which includes, you know, small, 1% to 2% motor carriers all the way up to utilities like Hawaiian Electric or Hawaii Gas or Hawaii dot com. So just to point that out, if it is, we can implement it on all of our 2,000 regulated entities. But I think it's better to be pointed towards those that have like a larger customer base.
Thank you. And then Ulupono Initiative in support?
Chair.
Thank you. And Hawaiian Electric with comments? In person?
Good morning.
On Zoom?
Good morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees. My name is James Abraham. I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric, providing comments on Senate Bill 3285. As noted in our written testimony, we do have some concerns with this bill because it could delay or frustrate transaction that would otherwise be found to be in the public interest by the PUC. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. And Henry Curtis on Zoom?
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committees. We have been consulting with a number of energy experts on regulatory policy, and we find this bill to be very confusing. It would add a lot of delay, and we're not clear how it would actually be accomplishing anything. So like Hawaiian Electric and Consumer Advocate, we have and the PUC, we have concerns about this bill.
Thank you. And then finally, Hawaii Gas submitted written comments. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions? I guess a quick question for Consumer Advocate. There's some discussion about the possible delays that adding something additional could cost. But as I understand, the approval of the sale of a, well, assuming, I think our intention is to narrow this down, so everyone knows narrow this down to electric and gas utilities. But assuming there was a proposed sale of an electric utility, that is quite a lengthy process the PUC goes through to approve.
Yes. I mean, that's fair to say, yes.
And so how much additional time do you think this requirement might add?
That's, I can't answer that question. I mean, it depends on the nature of the transaction. Obviously, anything, we would want things to move as expediently and efficiently as possible.
Yeah, but some of the functions related to considering this and considering a proposal for sale to a privately owned entity could happen concurrently presumably as well.
Potentially, yeah.
Do you think it would be appropriate to put some kind of requirement for a timeline in statute? Or do you think that's something that we should direct the PUC to, you know, make, devise a process for?
Would be more in favor of a process-oriented approach.
So give that power to the PUC?
To the PUC.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Actually, last question. I mean, it's, I guess this bill is sort of one small thing, but it really only addresses a situation that would happen at the end of a very long chain of events. And I think, I think we still need to have further conversations about how we can, I think, address some of the concerns that this bill is intended to address earlier on in the process. Thoughts on that?
I think having as many options on the table is important to figure out what is the best pathway forward.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Any other questions, members? Nope. If not, move on to the last bill on our agenda, Senate Bill 2997. This is the wildfire protection plan requirement. And first up to testify, we have Office of the Governor.
Good morning Chairs, Members of the Committee, Blake O'Shuro, Senior Advisor for the Governor. We submitted our written testimony with comments. I'd just briefly like to summarize. While we are generally supportive of the intent of an idea of having a wildfire plan go through a process and be approved by the PUC, we much rather prefer the House Bill 2407 that had moved out of this chamber. That bill actually combines the wildfire protection plan and actually the securitization so that financing would be more limited to just wildfire protection planning. So we would recommend that you take a look at 2407 again instead of this singular vehicle just for securitization or for wildfire protection plan. I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And next up to testify, we have Consumer Advocate.
Morning Chair, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments, and note our preference for HB 2407 as well and the proposed amendments. We note our proposed amendments with that bill. Thank you. Available for questions.
Thank you. And then Public Utilities Commission?
Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee, Leo Sunshin, Chair of the PUC. Likewise, we will stand on our written testimony, providing comments and echoing the administration's preference to have HB 2407, HD2, the language put into this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii State Energy Office?
Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees, Mark Glick, Chief Energy Officer, Hawaii State Energy Office. We too stand on our testimony with comments on Senate Bill 2997, Senate Draft Two. Just to reiterate some of the, on some of the previous comments, the idea of merging securitization and the mitigation measures that were stipulated in House Bill 2407. securitization and the mitigation measures that were stipulated in House Bill 2407 are strongly preferred because they were laid out in quite great detail in House Bill 2407 and on, I think, more than six pages of guidance on what kinds of wildfire mitigation measures ought to be in place to be able to secure money under a securitization process. And we do believe there needs to be some cap or limit on the amount of securitization that might be offered under such bill to kind of limit the exposure to the state. Happy to elaborate on any more comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Ulupono Initiative.
Good morning. Michael Cologne, on behalf of Ulupono Initiative. Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. Yeah, we support Senate Bill 2997 in particular because we think wildfire planning is crucial, regardless of whether it's tied to securitization or not. There is a preference for the bill that's packaged with securitization, however. But we do want to recommend that whatever plan, planning measure goes forward, that it include scenarios for costs so that we can make kind of measured decisions as to what kind of cost impacts will, you know, and we can decide collectively, deferring to the wisdom of experts, as to what kind of cost measures and impacts would come from this as well. And then also, we want to reiterate that any process related to wildfire planning should also include, be open to community and stakeholder engagement. We think it's very crucial, especially kind of in light of what's happened and what will continue to happen with community-based planning and energy equity, that community has a say. I'll be available for comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Hawaii Association for Justice. Life of the Land on Zoom.
Aloha, Henry Curtis, Executive Director of Life of the Land. We too favor House Bill 2407. We also believe that community and stakeholder input is really critical. We note, finally, that this bill adds nothing to law as the Public Utilities Commission already has the authority to require a wildlife fire mitigation plan, and therefore, this bill is not needed if it's the vehicle moving forward.
Thank you. And then we have Hawaiian Electric.
Morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. My name is Jim Alberts, testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric in strong support of this bill with amendments. Now, hearing the testimony this morning from the other speakers, we would be okay with 2407 as a vehicle to move forward as well. But we would ask that, considering the language around securitization, be reviewed to make sure it's updated with the current Attorney General's viewpoint. If you do choose to move 2997 forward, the SB2 version, we ask that you would include the language from the original 2997 to be included in this bill. And there's a couple of reasons why. So really, the three objectives that we want to make sure we can cover as part of this bill are, one, to create a public process. The bill that was presented took all of that out, so it really says, present a plan. But it doesn't talk about how to or what to do. So the cleaner the process, the faster that the process could move forward. And we think that is critically urgent, that the process be able to move quickly for wildfire mitigation as fast as it can. So if we use that process, it'll be more thorough and it'll move quicker. So that public process is important, as other speakers have testified, that that input would be valuable to all the parties to make sure we look at it holistically. And that way, we know when we finish it up, that it goes to the Public Utility Commission for approval with all that input already baked in. The second thing that we think is important from an objective standpoint is to make sure that electric utilities have the resources they need to implement the plan. And without language in the bill that authorizes and allows for expenses and recovery in the process, it would be difficult and challenging to implement without those factors in the bill. And the third thing is to preserve the PUC's authority as part of the process. And I have spoken about this before, but a couple of examples I could give you in California at PG&E. The California Supreme Court ruled recently that people who sued PG&E because of a public safety power shut-off and the damages from that were, the California Supreme Court ruled in favor of PG&E because the PUC has the authority to make that decision. And because it was an approved plan by the PUC, the courts referred that jurisdiction back to the PUC, which is the rightful place for that to be. Another example would be for undergrounding. If we presented a plan that proposed to underground significant areas of all the islands and the process, this public process we went through from a risk-based approach said, we don't want to spend that much. We think there are other mitigations that can take care of a lot of the risk, but not spending as much as undergrounding everything. If that were modified as part of the filing, we would want to make sure that we couldn't, that a litigant could sue on behalf of an approved plan with that change. So those two examples are really what we wanted to get across. So again, just to recap, 2407 is okay as long as it includes changes and updates from the Attorney General's language for securitization. But if you move 2997 through, please include the language from the original bill. And appreciate the time today, allowing us to testify. We'll be here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have IBW in support. Not present. We had additional written testimony from KIUC, Maui Chamber of Commerce. Was there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, questions? Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Sunson.
Good morning, New. How are you? Morning.
Is it, there's a testimony in here saying that PUC already can do this? Is that true?
As written, yeah, we can, we can take a look at actually any plan that the utility would like to provide, any utility would like to provide us. So in that regard, yes.
Okay.
Right, because this is stripped down to just saying, you got to submit a wildfire plan.
Right, okay. And then I just, a follow-up that's been going through my mind, I'm sure you recall the Hurricane Lane fire that broke out 2018, that's five years ago, in Lahaina. So I, do you know that there was a plan that the PUC had vetted and there was something in place?
There was not. There was a plan being worked on, but not, not one filed for review by the commission.
Unfortunately.
Sorry.
Okay.
It does, it does predate my time, so I'm working off of what I know, what I know to be.
Thank you. I guess Consumer Advocate. I'm just noting in HB2407, House Draft 2, it still has language, and I remember discussing this on the first hearing we had with it, and I thought the decision-making, we had taken it out, and I don't know if it got reinserted. I should know that probably, but if you recall, this was a provision, and it's on page 20 of House Bill 2407, that, that says, actual costs that are no more than 50% greater than the costs the commission previously determined were reasonable, should be presumed prudent and authorized automatically, basically. Did you remember what happened with that?
My recollection, if I'm recalling correctly, was that was supposed to come out.
Okay. It didn't get put back in by a subsequent committee or?
I don't believe so, but I'm not certain on that.
Adopted amendments or something?
I'm not certain on that.
So we still agree that should probably get taken out?
Yes.
Okay. And then I had another question. There was, there was additional, there was additional provision, sorry, this is a little, I'm going a little outside the box, but there was additional provision in House Bill 2102, which didn't get a hearing, and I don't know if you reviewed that. And that included some provisions about reporting accidents. Does that ring a bell?
I have not reviewed that, yeah.
Okay. Let me see if I can phrase this differently. Do you think, you know, it would be appropriate to include in this bill a provision to sort of strengthen the accident reporting requirement that is currently in Section 269-9?
I would have to review the statutory language about that, but I can get back to you on that.
Okay, but just as a general question.
Conceptually, if there's, you know, the more information that we have on accidents, I think that's helpful in terms of finding out what happened.
Okay.
Root cause analysis.
Okay, thank you. Maybe for the Public Utilities Commission? Just the same question, if we included an additional provision in here to strengthen the language surrounding reporting accidents, I think the language included what already exists and then adding provision to report any wildfires that may have been caused by a public utility that destroyed a significant amount of public utility equipment and that, or that see resulted in loss of life. And then an additional provision that the utilities reporting of an accident or wildfire wouldn't, shall not be admissible evidence in any judicial, administrative, or other governmental proceeding for purposes of establishing that the wildfire was caused by a public utility, but just to generally strengthen the reporting requirement so that there's disclosure.
I think that would be okay with us.
Okay. All right. And just really quickly, because this is just a new thing, we're considering Hawaiian Electric. Do you have thoughts on that?
Just from a reporting standpoint, I think gathering information is helpful if it allows us to, you know, really do root cause analysis. I think that's okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions, members? All right, if not, we'll recess for decision-making, and we'll go to the Water, Land, EEP agenda, and we'll decision-make on both agendas at the end, so.
We are convening our joint committee hearing between Committee on Water and Land and Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection. It's Thursday, March 14th, 2024. This is our 8:30 to 8:00 AM agenda in Conference Room 325 at the State Capitol. We'll get started with our first item, SB 2922, SD2, and we have Office of the Governor.
Morning again, Chairs, Vice Chairs, member of the committee, Blake O'Shuro, Senior Advisor for the Governor. So similar to the last bill, our preference is that you take a look at 2407, HB2407. We think tying the wildfire protection plan and securitization is probably the better approach. The one other thing we would comment is, we know from several of the questions and discussions that there has always been a concern about the impact to ratepayers through securitization. And so from the administration's side, we are open to the idea of placing some sort of cap. Unfortunately, we're not in a position yet to recommend a number. We have had some discussions with the utility about what would be a fair number, and unfortunately, we're not at the point where we can put that in. But conceptually, addressing the concerns, I think we've heard some of the questions. If you wanted to put in a provision like that, I think we'd be open to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. DCCA, Division of Consumer Advocacy.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments, available for questions, and again, noting our preference for HB2407. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney General on Zoom? Oh, in person.
Good morning. Randall Nishiyama for the Department of the Attorney General. Due to the specialized nature of securitization financing, we submitted our bill to Craig Scully, the State's Public Finance Council, and he has attached his markup to the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Utilities Commission.
Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees, Leo Sunson, Chair of the PUC. Will stand on our written testimony, providing comments, and again, with our preference for the language in HB2407, HD2.
Thank you. Hawaii State Energy Office.
Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees, Committee Mark Lick, Chief Energy Officer. We also stand by our testimony with comments, again, reiterating our preference for House Bill 2407 language. Thank you.
Thank you. Ulupono Initiative.
Aloha again, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee, Michael Cologne, on behalf of Ulupono Initiative. We're testifying in support of this measure. We think that securitization is an important tool that businesses can use to bring down the impact of costs. And we all understand that these costs and investments are coming and are needed to mitigate wildfire impact. And so this is a tool that can be used to bring down that impact and kind of lessen and create a buffer for customers and ratepayers, so we think it's crucial. We've seen it characterized as somewhat of a bailout, and we kind of take issue with that. It's not necessarily bailout. A bailout would be if the government were providing money. This function allows the utility to borrow against future rate collections to help fund these needed investments. So if we collectively understand that there's investments that are needed as a result of wildfires, then this would be a way to mitigate the coming costs and bring down, we know the costs are coming, but to make it as less of an impact as we can. So, and that reason in particular is why we support the measure, and then would also recommend kind of separating out any discussions of organizational restructuring, since that's a little bit tangential to the purpose of this bill and may detract from the ability for the bill to get passed. Available for comments and discussions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Life of the Land on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chairs, and members of the committee. We believe this bill as written is unconstitutional on two separate grounds. First, the reorganization provision was added in the final policy committee in decision-making only, without any notice to the public, and therefore, the public has had no opportunity in the former body to testify on the substance. Second, we believe that securitization and reorganization are two fundamentally different issues, and the Constitution requires only one issue within a bill. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Hawaiian Electric.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committees. My name is Kevin Cutser. I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric in strong support of SB 2922, SD2. We're requesting amendments that largely improve the technical functioning of the bill without altering the substance, and we'd like to work with the current committees to improve the language of the bill. This bill with our proposed amendments will enable expenses due to catastrophic wildfires that the commission approves to be financed at a lower cost with less impact to customers. It would enable electric utilities to make investments to reduce the risk of future wildfires at the lowest possible cost to customers, and it will result in the adoption of mechanisms for funding wildfire costs as well established, as 20 other states have allowed investor-owned utilities to finance costs utilizing securitized bonds. We propose edits to this bill in several respects. These edits are reflected and attached black line to my testimony. First, we proposed a number of technical amendments just to make sure that the securitization can effectively be implemented. And second, we understand that flexibility was given or discretion to allow securitizations for various costs, and we provide edits expressly that required a commission in authorizing those costs and expenses to limit the burden on ratepayers and require shareholder-backed contributions. In the wake of the Maui wildfires, we'll need to raise substantial capital to cover expenses associated with those catastrophic wildfires, and securitization is the most efficient and least costly way of meeting those expenses. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. IBW, okay, not present. That's all signed up to testify. Anybody else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none. Members, questions? Go ahead. I guess Energy Office to start. In previous hearings, we've just been trying to get a understanding on what the impact would be on ratepayers in different scenarios, the amount of the bond and the interest rate you would expect to get. And you provided us some numbers, and then in a subsequent hearing, Hawaiian Electric provided some numbers that were like half the amount that you had said. provided some numbers that were like half the amount that you had said, and I think at that time I had asked if you could talk to each other and figure out what methodology was appropriate to use and come up with something everyone could agree was correct to help us understand what the impact would be, and I still haven't heard anything from anyone.
The guidance that we had provided previously, Chair, was based on the green energy market securitization process and resulted, I think, in roughly $5 or so per bill for a...
Five hundred million?
Yeah, $500 million estimation, so, and I think that's roughly consistent with further testimony, it did come from the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. So we think that's still probably an accurate guideline. We haven't had direct discussions with Hawaiian Electric, but happy to do so.
Okay. I think that would be a good idea. Hawaiian Electric, do you have that, I mean, I guess you're going to give me the same answer you did last time, but it would be good if you could talk to each other and agree to a methodology for giving us and the public some understanding of how much this is going to cost people on their electric bills.
Yeah, and I'll just say, our numbers haven't changed, it's about $5 a month for a billion dollars of securitization, so we've been actively...
You're saying half the amount that Energy Office is saying?
Yes, so we're actively pursuing...
And Energy Office's numbers were actually more between, I think, 550 and 650, depending on if it was a 5% or 6% interest rate.
Yep, so we're actively trying to, we're actively trying to meet with the Green Infrastructure Team to compare notes and make sure we're looking at this the same way, and I think once we have that meeting, it'll become clear.
Okay, if you can let us know, I think that we deserve to know what we'd be looking at per, you know, 500 million, a billion, or 2 billion, whatever the case may be.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. One more, for Consumer Advocate? Just wondering, there was language in the bill that was passed out of the Water, Land, and Commerce and Consumer Protection Committees yesterday that I think got watered down, it was added by the Senate, that related to some conditions, adding some conditions in on, you know, if we were to approve that. And potentially, although a lot of people testifying here today are saying, "Don't do this," I think it's worth discussing, I mean, potentially that might be more appropriate to include in the securitization bill. And not, I think to be as specific as they were in that bill about picking a specific outcome, but to open it up to allow the PUC to consider these kind of things as potential scenarios alongside just kind of the pathway that inertia will lead us down without sort of intervention or laying out some process to think about. For example, you know, before issuing, approving a securitization, before the PUC would approve securitization, that would impact ratepayer bills, and presuming we keep the same utility structure or that the utility might still end up declaring bankruptcy or being sold, for the PUC to have an opening somewhere in statute to consider, how would it, what would the scenario look like if certain assets were sold off? What would the scenario look like if you separated distribution from generation? What would the scenario look like if some of the neighbor island utilities were sold off and became cooperatives and had access to cheaper capital and the benefits that might come with that? What would it look like? Sorry.
Lot of scenarios.
But I mean, there's just, there's different potential scenarios, and without laying out some kind of opening to have the PUC to be able to consider that and, you know, I was going to say the organizational structure, I think that's important. I think looking at Hawaiian Electric's executives' salaries and bonuses is important, and without laying something out somewhere, you know, in the securitization bill, we're going to miss the window of opportunity to do anything about this, and, you know, it's going to be out of the hands of the PUC and the legislature and the public. So I know there's a lot of, I mean, fear mongering is maybe too strong a word, you know, I mean, I think the intention is not, if there's a need for securitization to move forward and allay the fears of investors, et cetera, I think that's important, and I don't think that we want to envision a scenario where we put so many provisions in this bill that securitization, you know, feels like it's going to be impossible at all, but I also think it's reasonable to talk about these things and not have everyone come in saying, "Oh, like, there's no way we can do any of this because the sky will fall." And so I think, I don't know if that'll happen today, but I mean, I think this is the job of the Public Utilities Commission and the Consumer Advocate and the Energy Office to be thinking about these things and making recommendations to us and making sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of the people of the state of Hawaii. So have you been doing any work thinking about what language might be included in these bills as they move forward in the next, you know, month that we have left to actually make changes to them?
Yes, I mean, we review every bill and make, and we are thinking holistically about what would be the best approach as we move forward, and we'll continue to do so.
Do you think it would be appropriate to put some provisions in this bill at some point that would, you know, address those things we just talked about and allow the PUC to be able to consider?
Providing the ability to, if we're talking about scenario-based where there's alternative ownership models, which I think is what we're talking about...
That's one scenario.
One, one aspect of it, right? I think having that flexibility is appropriate. As I've mentioned before, we should have all options on the table to review what is the best pathway forward.
Yeah, I know, I'm not saying that, I don't think the legislature should necessarily pick one outcome, but I think the PUC and the analysts there should have the ability to be able to consider.
Agreed.
Okay. I guess, thank you, and just really quickly, oh, thanks, I don't have any further questions?
Okay, thank you.
For Energy Office? Do you have, I mean, just what we were just talking about, have you guys been giving thought to this question as well?
Yeah, Chair, alone, absolutely. We've been spending a lot of time looking at various scenarios. I agree that it's important, particularly as you look at securitization, which has so much, which places so much burden on the state itself and, you know, as essentially backup entity for financing, that you do compare that with other options, but it's difficult to embed all of that in one bill. So we are looking at a number of different scenarios, we're looking at them as overall investments, we're looking at minority interests, we're looking at changing fuels to try to save money, we're looking at all kinds of different options that would be in addition to securitization, wildfire mitigation. Again, it's very difficult to be able to put them into an omnibus bill, but they should definitely be considered, I agree with you.
Well, they're not in any other bill, so if they don't go here, then where?
Some of those things are outside the scope of legislation, some of the direct investments or investment pools from third parties might be outside of something that the legislature itself would do.
But I think authorizing the PUC to be able to consider those things as part of approval of a securitization might be appropriate, and I think that California did an omnibus bill that included all of that in one place.
Certainly worth considering.
Okay, thanks, sorry, go ahead.
I have a question for Hawaiian Electric. Can you describe what a utility's service territory is, or what Hawaiian Electric's service territory is?
So Hawaiian Electric's service territory covers the island, the county of Honolulu. Maui Electric covers the island of Maui as well as Molokai and Lanai.
So those are separate territories?
For each of our subsidiaries, yes.
Okay. So as it's written, the bill would allow for that to be, for the recovery charges to be allocated to a specific area or a specific territory?
I think in concept, that would be a lot for any ratepayer base to pay, I think that's the point you're trying to make, and I think the way we even visualize securitization is applying to all of the customers along the Hawaiian Electric companies.
Okay, so maybe as this moves forward, if it were to explicitly state all of the public utility territories, would that be acceptable?
We could help you with the language.
Okay.
Come up with suggestions on that.
Thank you.
I would like to address some of the previous comments in terms of...
Sorry, we need to move on.
But Chair has a question.
Okay.
Sorry, not for you folks, for Attorney General, sorry, thank you. But if you would like to send the Chair's further comments, that's also appropriate, and then we can also share it with the committee, we can do it that way, thank you. Mr. Nishiyama? Quick question, so I think the administration has expressed their preference for the language in House Bill 2407, and I was just curious if you've shared with your outside counsel the language of 2407?
Yes, we have, and he has marked up the bill.
Oh, okay, if you would be able to provide that to the committee, that would be very helpful.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nishiyama.
Okay, thank you. Members, any more questions? Okay, Rep. Hashem?
Now you got me curious, can you say?
Rep. Hashem, sorry, we need to move on, we've got two more bills to go and we have a 9:30 agenda, sorry.
We'll submit our comments.
Sorry. Okay, we will move on. SB 2753, we have Air Conditioning, Heating, and Refrigerant Institute on Zoom.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Members of the Committees. My name is Chris Brzee, and I'm with the Air Conditioning, Heating, and Refrigeration Institute, or AHI. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to convey AHI's strong support for Senate Bill 2753, which will provide the H-factor industry with the certainty needed to comply with federal regulations phasing down the use of hydrofluorocarbons, or HFCs, in refrigerants. AHI represents more than 330 manufacturers of air conditioning and heating commercial refrigeration equipment, and as Committees, members of the Committees may be aware, the Federal American Innovation in Manufacturing Act, or AIM Act, is phasing down the production and import of a class of chemicals known as HFCs. HFCs are primarily used as refrigerants in air conditioners and refrigerators, along with other applications such as foams, solvents, and fire suppressants. The U.S. EPA is implementing the AIM Act in a way that will guide an environmentally friendly transition to a range of new substitute refrigerants. Hundreds of substitutes exist and are commercially available for all major uses of HFCs. Manufacturers are already transitioning to these new refrigerants, which are creating jobs, stimulating new investment, positioning the U.S. to sustain its technological leadership in the H-factor industry across the world. The climate benefits of the AIM Act implementation are considerable, because many HFCs are thousands of times more powerful than carbon dioxide and warming the planet, the transition of new substitute refrigerants will reduce U.S. greenhouse gas emissions by approximately 2.4 billion tons of carbon dioxide equivalent by 2036. Globally, the federal AIM Act assures U.S. compliance with the Gugnali Amendment to the Montreal Protocol, which phases down HFCs worldwide and will avoid up to half degree Celsius of projected warming by the year 2100. AHI and its members' companies have been working diligently over the last several years to amend state building codes to allow use of these substitutes for refrigerants and avoid any marketplace disruptions as the EPA transition begins. To date, 45 states have the necessary changes to their state building codes, including California, Oregon, Washington, and many others, many using legislation very similar to this bill. The few remaining states are in process of doing so, either through legislation or regulatory action. The most important issue right now is time. New regulations finalized by EPA will significantly restrict the upstream supply of HFCs beginning this year and separately prohibit the use of certain HFCs in most new air conditioning refrigeration product categories in 2025. As manufacturers transition product lines to HFC substitutes, they need to be confident they can sell products with HFC substitutes in Hawaii. The most significant barrier manufacturers face is the state's building code.
Mr. Brzee, can you please summarize your testimony?
Yep, yeah, I'm actually on my last line already.
Okay.
Apologies. SB 2753 amends Hawaii's building code to allow an HFC substitute, which has already been approved by EPA, in air conditioning refrigeration equipment, changes that quickly, and that's all the bill does. Thank you guys for the opportunity to present this testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, members, that's all signed up, anyone else wishing to provide testimony?
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to SB 3142 relating to water infrastructure, Department of Health.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. Department, Dennis Lopez, Hawaii Department of Health, the department is in strong support of this bill, offering amendments, in particular, the third change, which is the allotment of how much can be transferred from the clean water SRF to the drinking water SRF. In accordance with the federal statute, is calculated not on the basis of the clean water SRF, it's actually, you take the 33% cap of the drinking water SRF funds, that value is the cap amount that can be moved from the clean water SRF to the drinking water SRF. Just a little nuance in the federal statute, and to clarify that for the, for the purpose of the bill. We'll be available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Ulupono Initiative?
Chair, Ulupono Initiative.
Thank you, that's all signed up, anybody else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, no questions, we'll recess for decision making.
We're going to go straight to decision making, so we're reconvening the Joint Committee, Energy and Environmental Protection and Water and Land for decision making, get back to the beginning. First up, we have Senate Bill 2513. On this bill, we're going to adopt Department of Health's amendments regarding the position titles. We'll include blank dollar amounts, but we'll note the amount suggested in Department of Health's testimony in the committee report. We will adopt Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition's amendments to add some clarifying language, some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and defect the date to the year 3000. Members, any discussion? If not, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Voting on SB 2513 SD 2, Chair recommendation is to pass with amendments, both Chair and Vice Chair, vote aye. Representative Gates is excused, Representative Kahaloa, Representative Peruso, Representative Woodson is excused, and Representative Ward is also excused. Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Water Land Committee Members, same recommendation, any questions, comments? Okay, Vice Chair?
Voting on SB 2513 SD 2 with amendments, Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, Representative Chen, Representative Ganneden, excused, Representative Hashem, Representative Mizuno, Representative Morikawa, Representative Takayama, Representative Souza, excused, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Thank you. Senate Bill 2518 relating to geothermal energy exploration. So in this, we're going to add in what was Section 2 from House Bill 2105, which was also relating to geothermal, except due to the title of this bill, we'll leave out the language referencing carbon sequestration and just call that new section Geothermal Resources Characterization Program, and then we will keep the appropriation blank, we'll change that from HTDC to the Hawaii State Energy Office and defect the date to the year 3000. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, please take the vote.
Okay, voting on SB 2518 SD 2, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, both Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absences of Representatives Gates and Ward, any members here, and the arrival of Representative Woodson. Anyone here with reservations or no's? Ms. Peruso, okay, one no with Representative Peruso. Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Water Land Committee, same recommendation with amendments, any questions, comments? Okay, Vice Chair with amendments.
Voting on SB 2518 SD 2 with amendments, Representative Ganneden and Souza are excused, are there any no's or reservations? Okay, hearing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on, Senate Bill 2322, this is the brownwater testing bill, we're going to adopt Department of Health's amendments, we'll defect the date to the year 3000, but note in the committee report that the effective date should be July 1st, 2025, when that's effectuated, if it moves forward, and that is all. With that, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Voting on SB 2322 SD 1, Chair recommends pass with amendments, Chair, Vice Chair vote ayes, excused are Representative Gates and Ward. At this time, are there any members with reservations or no's? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Water Land Committee, same recommendation, pass with amendments, any questions, discussion? Vice Chair, House Draft 1.
Vice Chair, House Draft 1.
Voting on SB 2322, SD 1 with amendments. Representative Ganneden and Souza are excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Hearing none, recommendation adopted.
Thank you, members.
And then for Senate Bill 3285, we're going to make some amendments here. We're going to narrow the language to apply just to electric and gas utilities. We'll adopt the Consumer Advocates amendments, including adding a new section to amend Chapter 269-14.5 to broaden the scope relating to receivership. And then we'll add a provision that the PUC may establish a process for this consideration of alternative bids if there was a sale, including timelines, and we'll defect the date to the year 3000. With that, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Voting on SB 3285, SD 1. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Both Chair and Vice Chair vote ayes, noting excused absences of Rep. Gates and Ward. Any members here voting with reservations or no's? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Waterline Committee members, same recommendation, pass with amendments. Any questions, comments? Vice Chair, House Draft 1.
Voting on SB 3285, SD 1 with amendments. Representative Ganneden and Souza are excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Hearing none, recommendation adopted.
Thank you, members.
And then last on this agenda, Senate Bill 2997, relating to public utilities. So for this, we're going to adopt the language from House Bill 2407 with some changes. So we'll take the appropriate language from the Purpose Clause and definitions that relate to the wildfire mitigation plan section of this. We'll add in sections 269, B, C, and D, except for on the current HD2 of House Bill 2407. On pages 20 to 21, we'll remove subsections 1 and 2 regarding the sort of automatic approval of costs that are more than 15% or less than 15% over. And then we will add in provisions regarding strengthening the reporting of accidents. And this language is going to come from House Bill 2102, Section 3. And then we will defect the date to the year 3000. With that, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 2997, SD 1. Chair recommends to pass with amendments. Chair, Vice Chair vote ayes. Excused are Representative Gates and Ward. Any members present voting with reservations or no's? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Sorry, Waterline Committee members, same recommendation. Members, questions, concerns? Vice Chair, House Draft 1.
Voting on SB 2997, SD 2 with amendments. Representative Ganneden and Souza are excused. Any no's or reservations? Hearing none, recommendation adopted.
And we're adjourned.
And we'll reopen the Waterline/EP agenda. Got three bills. Thanks so much, everyone, for bearing with us. Okay, Senate Bill 2922, Senate Draft 2, relating to public utilities. Recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 1, adopting the contents of House Bill 2407, House Draft 2, relating to the securitization portion of that bill. And we are continuing with that bill's preference that the securitization will be allowed only for the wildfire protection plan. We'll probably need some technical, non-sensitive amendments, and we're going to defect the date to the year 3000. Members, any questions, comments? Vice Chair, House Draft 1.
Voting on SB 2922, SD 2 with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Chen. Representative Ganneden is excused. Representative Hashem. Representative Mizuno.
Aye.
Representative Morikawa.
Aye.
Representative Takayama.
Aye.
Representative Souza. Excused. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you, members.
And Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection, same recommendation. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, please take the vote.
Voting on SB 2922, SD 2. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, and both Chair and Vice Chair vote ayes. Excused absences are Representative Gates and Ward. Any members here voting with reservations or no's? Seeing none, Chair, the measure is adopted.
Okay, next, Senate Bill 2753, relating to building codes. Recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 1. We're going to insert the contents of House Bill 2654, House Draft 1, which was a companion measure to this that we previously voted and passed out. We're also, just to make it clear, defecting the date to the year 3000. Members, questions, comments? Okay, Vice Chair, House Draft 1.
Okay, voting on SB 2753 with amendments. Are there any no's or reservations? Representative Ganneden and Souza are excused.
Oh, Rep. Ganneden is here? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Representative Ganneden.
Good job.
Aye. Representative Souza is excused. Recommendation is adopted.
Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection, same recommendation. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 2753. Excused are Representative Gates and Ward. Any members here voting with reservations or no's? Seeing none, measure is adopted.
Okay, last bill, SB 3142, Senate Draft 2, relating to water infrastructure. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. We're going to take the amendments from Department of Health, and we are going to defect the date to the year 3000. Members, questions, comments? Okay, Vice Chair, House Draft 1.
Voting on SB 3142, SD 2 with amendments. Are there any no's or reservations? Rep. Souza is excused. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
And EEP, same recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 3142, SD 2. Recommendation pass with amendments. Excused are Gates and Ward. Any members present voting with reservations or no's? Seeing none, the measure is adopted.
All right, welcome back. We are here for the NAMM Agenda for Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection, Thursday, March 14, Room 325. First up on the agenda, Senate Bill 2677, relating to energy efficiency. This is the solar hot water heater variance bill. First up to testify is the Energy Office.
Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, members of the committee, Mark Lick, Chief Energy Officer, Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand by our testimony with comments on Senate Bill 2677, but would like to sort of reiterate some concerns about the way the bill is now structured as it went through committees, that really has removed any ability for the Energy Office to have meaningful review and commentary on the measure as it moves forward. We were trying to place the decision-making, the final approval, precisely where the process flowed. And the way the bill currently sits, we don't really have any ability to do anything other than process paper. And so, please consider our amendments, which place that burden correctly, and happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we have Sierra Club of Hawaii on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Wayne Tsakova, Sierra Club of Hawaii. We're opposed to this measure as drafted. You have a written testimony in opposition. And I just want to emphasize that, you know, there are, I think, some pretty significant public health and human health, as well as fire safety and virus concerns that would be raised by the branches in this measure, and that should be examined before we move something like this forward. So happy to answer any questions, otherwise we respectfully ask that you hold this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Blue Planet Foundation?
Good morning, Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, members of the committee, Jody Robinson of Blue Planet Foundation. You have our testimony in opposition. There's overwhelming testimony in opposition to this bill. We opposed the SD 1, which would transfer the process to the counties, and then subsequently, as it was amended, to allow a greater variance process for gas water heaters. We oppose that as well. So happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And 350 Hawaii on Zoom.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Sheri Pollack, and I'm with 350 Hawaii. I'm testifying in strong opposition to SB 2677, SD 2. We stand on our written testimony, but I would like to highlight a few things. This bill was essentially written by the fossil fuel industry. They are using factually inaccurate and baseless justifications and greenwashing to create loopholes in the law, not to benefit people, but solely to increase their customer base. Never mind we are in a climate crisis. It's all about greed and putting profit over people and the planet, and it's despicable. I urge you to take a careful look at the study referenced in our testimony that documents the severe health harms from gas appliances, especially among children. Don't be fooled by the gas industry's disinformation designed to keep us hooked on dirty and dangerous gas, including using tobacco industry tactics to minimize the health harms of gas appliances. The fossil fuel industry lied to us about climate change, and they're lying to us now about the health harms. They have the audacity to use Lahaina as an excuse to expand their customer service base, eyeing the new construction that's anticipated there. One of the suggested variances, and I'm not making this up, it's in the bill. They justify putting in a gas tank in a home that's called "in an area of high risk of wildfires." Pushing putting in a gas tank in an area of high risk of wildfires. This is disaster capitalism at its ugliest. This is disgusting. We urge you to hold this egregious measure. Thank you.
Thank you. And Hawaii Solar Energy Association?
Good morning, Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Cochran, and members of the committee. I'm Rocky Mold with the Hawaii Solar Energy Association. We represent the majority of solar companies doing business in the state of Hawaii. Many of them install solar hot water. Our solar hot water mandate has been an extremely successful program that's reduced costs for residents and cleaned up our environment and created jobs. I'll stand on our written testimony in opposition to this measure, but note that we feel that those variances that are in there really are almost nullifying the law in itself. So I'm here for any questions if you have them. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. We have Greenpeace Hawaii, Dave Mullenix on Zoom.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you so much for your ongoing work to protect our environment. I really admire this committee's work and your efforts. I think this piece of legislation has major problems. As I know you're all very aware, that climate scientists have laired that 2023 was the hottest year in human history, and next year will be even hotter due to our use of fossil fuels. UN Secretary Anthony Guterres stated that if we don't get off on fossil fuels, we are on a highway for climate hell. SB 2677 rolls back Hawaii's solar water mandate bill. It undermines the legislature's goal to cut Hawaii's greenhouse gas emissions, and especially due to the amendments suggested by Hawaii Gas, who is not a local company like they pretend. They are Argo Infrastructure Partners in New York City. The goal of that corporation is to expand Hawaii Gas's customer base so they can expand their profits. This is not, we always leave you aware of when people are testifying and suggesting amendments, why they're doing so. And this is what's motivating Hawaii Gas into Argo Partners. So please hold 2677. And once again, thank you so much for your ongoing efforts to protect our climate and your effort to protect our environment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then we have Brian Gold in Childen Solar Supply.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. And we apologize that our testimony was late. We largely stand by our written testimony. I'd like to highlight three additional points, if I may. The first is that this bill seems to imply that one water heating technology is more resilient than another. And so I'd just like to highlight that of the six major tankless gas water heater brands available in the United States, all of those require an electrical connection to function. So one connection, just gas, just electric, that will not function, say in the example of a catastrophic grid outage. The second point I'd like to make is this bill also seems to imply that there is not a pathway for folks where solar water heating is not the appropriate choice. And having sat on the rulemaking committee with HSEO and Hawaii Gas, I can tell you that's certainly not the case. That was an arduous, months-long process to define that variance pathway. And I'd encourage the committee to look at HSEO's own data as to if the variance process is working. So in 2023, there were roughly 1,200 variance applications, and about 90% of those were approved. So for those folks that deserve to have another option, they're largely getting it. The last point I'd like to make is, at the end of the bill, there's a concerning piece of language regarding allowing for construction that is other than is on a building permit application. I think that's particularly concerning and probably something that the counties would have issue with. So I just wanted to flag that. And I'd be happy to be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have additional testimony in opposition from Green Party of Hawaii, Sunaru Inc., Hawaii Climate Action Coalition, Inception Financial, Green Power Projects LLC, Meyer Burger, Hawaii Energy. We have comments from Hawaii Gas, and then 31 additional individuals in opposition. Members, any questions?
For the solar companies, either, yeah, whichever. Oh, you're Mold, and you're gold?
I'm Mold.
I was like, are you father, son? Okay, so Mr. Mold or Gold? Okay. Anyway, thank you for being here. And for solar, you know, I was from Lahaina, and of course, I saw the, I was through the gas tanks exploding and all of that. So I do know that occurs. So my question, though, I've been told that solar, though, also has negative, when it's on fire, you cannot put it out. It's, you just have to let it burn out, and it takes a while for it to do so. I mean, is there any type of negativity in that sense with, you know, should, God forbid, fire occur? And, you know, Lahaina is, I love solar and think it's appropriate.